Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. This is our first meeting of the year, and so we're going to get off to a good start, I'm sure. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales?
Here.
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Dur?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia is absent. Councilmember Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. Do I have a motion to excuse?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. If you'll all stand and join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we have our moment of silence, I'd like you to go ahead and take a seat. We just, we all here tonight just recited the pledge of allegiance as we often do. But we actually made a pledge to our flag and to our republic. The peaceful transfer of power over 48 years is the backbone of this republic, and it must continue. No matter our politics, religion, or ethnic background, we must ensure this peaceful process is upheld, or our republic is in trouble. It is our responsibility as citizens to question our government and demand changes as they may be needed, but we cannot interfere with this process. Please join me now in a moment of silence to hope and pray that all is peaceful throughout this upcoming transfer of power within the office of the President of these United States and our Congress. Have an agenda before us this evening? Any changes?
Motion to approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Minutes, we have the minutes of the December 14th, 2020 regular meeting. Any discussion?
Motion to approve the minutes of the December 14th meeting, Your Honor.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the December 14th, 2020 regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is a public hearing, and so I would ask that the application be read, please.
This is a public hearing for the hospital's facility improvement and refunding refund bonds. This is ordinance number 2103, an ordinance approving the potential issuance by the County of Montgomery, Ohio, of its revenue bonds pursuant to Chapter 140 Ohio Revised Code to finance hospital facilities for the benefit of certain nonprofit affiliates of Kettering Health Network located in the County of Montgomery, Ohio, and the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, pursuant to Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code authorizing the execution and delivery of public hospital agencies agreement and other documents in connection with the issuance of such bonds and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. The applicant, Mr. Dodd.
Hey, it's good to see you folks today. Boy, it's great to see you folks. At a future time, I'd be looking forward to giving a hospital update, but as of right now, my only encouragement is stay healthy and stay well. The hospital is operating at full ICU capacity for the last about six weeks, and so your thoughts and prayers are always welcome. The caregivers couldn't be more satisfied with the vaccine that's starting to roll out, and we're working with the county and city and all the other local regions to make sure that the vaccine rollout goes effectively based upon what the governor's wishes are as well on that. But today, we're here to talk about similar to when you refinance a home. Today, we're talking about a little bit more, taking advantage of some of the market rates. And so Julie is going to give you a quick update on that.
So this public hearing is being held in connection with, as you said, the possible issuance by Montgomery County of these hospital facilities improvement refunding revenue bonds. So the refunding is what Mr. Dodd was referring to, the interest rates. It's a really advantageous time. The important thing, as far as you would be concerned, is that these bonds are only backed by Kettering Health. There are no taxpayer dollars that are being pledged or used to pay back the bonds. We are just seeking your approval.
All right. Thank you very much. There may be some questions a little bit later, but we're going to get through this legal process real quick. Mr. McHugh?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Just to reiterate, these are, this is not uncommon with respect to hospitals. It is allowed under tax code and Ohio law. It does provide them a low-cost ability to borrow. As I say, this is a refinancing, but I think it's important to point out that approximately $100 million of this money, so part of it's going to pay off. Butler County initially funded this, about 100 was, a good chunk of that was used here in Beaver Creek at the Soane facility. So I think that's important to note. Additionally, these are not general obligations, so there is no responsibility. One of, I think, the third or fourth whereas reiterates that because I thought that was important for the public, and therefore, as was stated, the Kettering Hospital system, there's a couple entities involved, but it's all Kettering Hospital, the system. They are solely obligated, if something goes wrong, they will be responsible pay. So this does not come back against the city.
Okay. So, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so at this time, if there's anybody present this evening that would like to comment on this application, please come forward and give your name and Seeing none, we will close the public input. Council input. Questions, anyone?
No.
No questions, Mayor, but I just would like to, I think, reiterate for everyone watching a home that there's no cost for the city.
Right.
Absolutely, so.
Correct.
Before there's any misunderstanding, it's just no expense, so, thank you.
I'd just like to say I'm proud to have a wonderful hospital like Soane in our community, and just has been mentioned here by a council member, there's no financial liability on us, and more than willing to try to cooperate and help this hospital and other entities to be productive better.
Well said, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Well, as Mr. Dodd knows, every time there's a ribbon cutting, we always praise the Soane being present in our community, and so it goes without saying that we're very proud of your facility, so thank you. This will be an emergency ordinance, so I have a motion, please, if there's no further discussion.
So move.
For the record, we really need a little more specific motion to approve ordinance
21-03. What's the number?
As an emergency. I want to make sure that's on the record.
Oh, I see. Ordinance 2103 being an emergency, move. Approval. We'll have to have a roll call.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 21-03 as an emergency. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Dur?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Good to go, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a public hearing, PUD 20-1.
This is case number PUD 20-1 on an application filed by Stephen Daniel Sowards of 1019 Rainbow Court, Bradenton, Florida, 34212. The application requests approval to rezone 0.9425 acres from I-1 Light Industrial to a CPUD Commercial Plan Unit Development. The property is located at 1150 Old Mill Lane, further described as Book 5, Page 7, Parcel 31 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is the applicant present this evening? Anyone from the applicant, application that'd like to speak? No? All right, staff's going to kick it off, is that correct? All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
The applicant was unable to make it this evening due to unforeseen circumstances. We would ask that we still be able to proceed with this case, and if there are any questions that we can't answer tonight, we'll make sure that those are addressed at the second reading if it does move forward.
Sure.
So before he's an application requesting approval of a rezoning for approximately nine-tenths of an acre of land located at 1150 Old Mill Lane, this request, should it be approved, would rezon the property from I-1 Light Industrial to a Commercial Plan Unit Development. The intent of the applicant is to convert the existing building on the site into a convenience store that would be geared towards the bike path users. So the parcel under discussion, as I stated, is located just north of the Creekside Trail Bike Path and just south of the existing U-Haul Moving and Storage. So it's currently 0.9425 acres and contains a 2,250 square foot building that is currently being used as an auto repair business, which is a permitted use within the I-1 zoning district. And the clicker's not working. Here we go. All right, let's try this again. So, as I stated, the property is zoned I-1. The surrounding properties just to the north is also zoned I-1. To the east is I-1 as well, and then to the south, you have the bike path, and then just past the bike path in this area is a residential property. So everything across Fairfield within the Dayton-Zeonia Corridor area is zone B-2, B-3, B-4. Most of those, as you all know, are offices, retail, kind of low-intensity commercial uses. This property is also located within the 1% annual flood, the 100-year floodplain. We made the applicant aware of this because it is, you know, it's a big deal when you're talking about redevelopment of a property. They would need to make sure that they meet all of the requirements of our special flood hazard area before we would move forward with permits, which might include either if they were building a new building, elevating the building, or dry floodproofing the building. And if they make substantial repairs to the existing building, they would also have to meet those requirements. As far as the land use plan is concerned, this property is designated as community commercial and office. It is located within that Dayton-Zeonia Corridor planning area. The applicant's request is consistent with the land use plan, the existing land use plan. So with this proposed change from industrial to a commercial planned unit development, what we would be doing is limiting the number of permitted uses that would be allowed on the site. So when you, with the, with the existing industrial zoning that it has, there are multitude of uses that staff feels aren't, aren't really compatible with the surrounding uses, aren't compatible with the Dayton-Zeonia Corridor. So by rezoning the property to a commercial PUD, we can limit those uses, which, if you look in, in the actual ordinance, we have limited those uses to only B-2 uses, and then we've also excluded a couple of those B-2 uses as well that we feel aren't compatible with the area, and also a couple of the uses that just wouldn't work on a site that's less than an acre. It just, well, it wouldn't make any sense. So staff is recommending approval of this request with the conditions in the attached ordinance, and if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
All right. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this application? Please come forward, give a name and address, and are you able to limit your time to three minutes?
Definitely. My name is Douglas Hall.
Okay, thank you.
I live at 1112 Old Mill Lane, and I'm also representing Christine Martin, the property owner, at 1088 Old Mill Lane. Our concern, as we noted in the email that I offered to you individuals, we're concerned over the nature of another retail establishment, especially a convenience store located adjacent to our property. We are the only residential area, about 12 acres on the south side of the creek. We do own about an acre and a half that's along the bike path on the north side of the creek, so there is direct interaction with the property. Concerns are addition of another retail establishment in a venue where we have already two or three abandoned retail establishments. For example, the Advanced Auto Parts is vacant, has been vacant since it was remodeled. The Panera's is still open on the corner, even though they've done a lot of work to build the building, it still isn't a non-open retail establishment. So concerns are just additional businesses, especially of a convenience store nature. Concerns are traffic flow. Old Mill Lane is a dead end. There's already traffic constrictions at that intersection because of the bike path, because of U-Haul, and the mill itself. So addition of any additional vehicle traffic at that location is troublesome. Additional lighting or paving in the nature of a parking lot raises concerns over flooding and light pollution. Again, we do see all these activities that go on because of the retail activities, so there's concern. When I see a convenience store mentioned, I think of alcohol sales, tobacco sales, after-hour activities. So concerns over whether this is daylight only, or what's the nature of the business is an issue to us. If it's truly to serve the nature of the bike path, is it a seasonal business? So what happens in the winter? Does it reduce its, its activity, or what's, what's the nature of the neighbor going to be as you allow the development of this location? And again, with the reputation of a convenience store, I think of security, are you ready to protect the property? Already, because we are on a dead-end spur, we have the desire to use it as a parking lot by the bike path users, and so the addition of another parking area where the car repair shop is now raises some issues of concern. So all those activities are the reason I'm presenting my concerns at this point in time. So I thank you for the time. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, we will get to that shortly. We're going to see if anybody else has any comments, and then we'll try to discuss some of that. Good evening.
My name is Christine Martin at 1088 Old Mill Lane. At the last meeting, some of our questions, you said to hold off until this meeting, well, that group said to hold them off, because they weren't quite sure what the nature of this business is. It's this sort of, oh, convenience store, service the bike path. When will you know, like, are they going to be selling alcohol? What kind of signage is there going to be in hours of operation? Like, when, and is there any chance it's going to turn into a gas station?
Okay. We'll see if we can't get those answered for you here in a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? All right, we will close the public hearing. And so council input, can, do you have any direct answers for these two individuals right now? Let's get that out of the way first, please.
Sure. What we, what we spoke of at the Planning Commission meeting was, a lot of the questions that they have are for the specific site plan stage. As far as circulation and paving and all of the details of how the business will work all come later at the specific site plan stage, not now in the rezoning stage. So right now, we're just rezoning the property. We're not looking at anything to do with stormwater runoff, or parking council, or, you know, square footage, or anything like that, so.
Okay.
So that's, that's what was referenced at the last meeting.
Were any of the one, items you removed, or said could not be done in the B-1, are they a gas station, or any of those?
We did not exclude gas stations. I think there, there is a big issue with putting in a gas station within a floodplain because you have to put tanks underground.
Yeah.
So that's, and that's something that I talked to the applicant about, that that's not something that he's pursuing. So he was thinking more of like, an ice creams, ice cream shop, convenience store, that kind of thing. It wouldn't be 24 hours, that's something that we spoke about at the last meeting. It would be open in the winter. I don't, he wasn't planning on just doing seasonal, having it open for a season and then closing it in the winter. I mean, those were the items that we discussed, and the rest is really the details that would be discussed and figured out at the specific site plan stage.
All right, thank you very much. This will go to council input, and before we open it all the way up, the, you know, one of the things that you just heard is the specifics, I mean, yeah, specific site plan is where a lot of that detail work gets ironed out. As far as uses, this is the stage that can, uses can be addressed. So we may discuss that a little bit, but I see it in, from a general ballpark, I see going from I-1 down to basically a B, you know, general business district use is a big win for the region. I mean, it's not, I know you live right next door to it, but it, I-1, there's so many bad things that could go in there without any oversight by the city, really, no restrictions placed on it. A PUD does allow the city to add restrictions, pretty stiff restrictions, if we see the need for them, and that includes lighting, that includes a lot of different things. So there will be another step that will address a lot of your concerns. This is also then just the first reading, so we will have another reading at our next regular scheduled meeting, and, and we can discuss some of the restrictions that may need to go there, so. You want to start over here?
Yeah, I had one, one or two questions. I guess, has the applicant indicated when he may be ready to submit a specific site plan if this rezoning occurs?
I, I know that currently he is talking to engineers about everything that it's going to take to develop in, in the floodplain and to repurpose the existing building, if that's possible. So, so he's moving forward with those, with those items, just trying to figure out what the best course of action is for it.
Okay, so I think I heard you say it, but he's thinking about rehabbing the existing facility as opposed to?
Building new.
Building new.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I think those are the only questions I had, the only comment I have, very similar to the mayor's. I think that the construction of a business along the bike path that promotes the use of the recreational amenity is probably a great thing for the community, especially when you're changing from an I industrial use to a, to a PUD. I do think it will be frequented and used a lot, and so hopefully, in that specific site plan, we can address trespassing concerns and also litter concerns, lighting, and so forth, but parking, at this point, it has my, I approve so far.
Councilmember Dur?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up from Planning Commission, there was a discussion on Old Mill Lane, and it was brought up by public input today, just in terms of demarcating what is publicly allowed and what is a private driveway, because in going through there, it seems like it could be misused and to try and assuage some of the fears of, of the public input. I'm wondering if there's?
Yeah, so it, it does look like, because it's not used frequently, it does look like it's a private drive, but it is actually a public street. So all, all rules and regulations that apply to a public street, public street apply to Old Mill Lane all the way up across the bridge. So if, if there are issues with parking, or issues with litter, or anything like that, that's something that we, the city, would, would need to make sure is, you know, being enforced.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have any questions. I think all of my questions have been answered. I agree, I think this will be a tremendous asset to the bike path, but I also do have some of the same concerns that the public input has brought up, and do plan on addressing those during the specific site plan. So thank you.
Councilmember Curran? Chain store?
Oh, what's that?
Is it a chain store?
It's a, it would be a convenience store.
Well, I mean, is it a 7-Eleven? You don't?
Oh, no, no, no. I, no, at this, no. I, I, he doesn't, he's not planning on it being any, any type of?
Just an ice cream store.
Something like that, yes.
Something like that.
Yes.
We won't know for sure. I understand. Until the specific site plan.
Yeah.
Finished? Yes, thank you. Okay. Vice Mayor?
I have several concerns here, but I think most of them are going to be addressed at the site plan, because I bring a couple up, but entrance and exit there?
Yes.
Now is difficult.
Yes.
You know, just with no convenience store.
Absolutely.
And I'm concerned about that. I don't want to put another light on North Fairfield. And then I'm concerned about the impact on the wetlands and, you know, that area in there, too, because that's a, it's a nice area, and there are concerns, I have concerns about the residents that live back there, too. We'll have to do something. If this goes through, we'll have to do something to help them.
I agree.
But I think all that can be addressed at the site plan specifically, so, thank you.
Okay. Well, again, I would encourage that your conversations with the applicant kind of pull some of the things out of there that he might not do, like a service station. I don't think it's a great site for a service station, for sure.
Yeah.
But see if we can pull a few more of those things out, and then, of course, we will address a lot of the issues that are, the neighbors have concern with. But I want to repeat myself by saying that we could sit here and turn this down and do nothing, and somebody could come in there and put a X-rated video store in there. I mean, that's what is allowed in a type of things that can go in I-1. Is that, am I correct in that? I do, well, you don't have to, I'm, I know we had to put it somewhere.
There are a lot, yes, there are a lot of very intense uses that?
But there are very, very intense uses that could go there that would make it very difficult, not only on the neighbors, but on the community as well. So we do want to be proactive in trying to encourage a use that is friendly to the neighbor and to the community. So, thank you. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion to move this to the second reading?
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 21-01 to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for your input, and stay tuned. We're going to?
We appreciate that.
Keep you in tune is what's going on, so thank you. All right, next is a public hearing, PUD 20-2.
This is case number PUD 20-2 on an application filed by Unison Industries LLC, 2455 Dayton-Zeonia Road, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45434. The application requests approval to rezon 53.483 acres from RP1 Research Park to IPUD Industrial Plan Unit Development. The property is located on the west side of I-675, north of Research Boulevard, further described as Book 2, Page 5, Parcel 2 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present tonight? Please come forward, give us a name and address, please.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers.
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Morse, 9575 Tahoe Drive, Centerville. Here is the chief manufacturing engineer and representative for GE Aviation, which is the parent company to Unison Industries. Currently, we reside under seven rooftops in the Beaver Creek Township area, Straddling 35 and Dayton-Zeonia Roads. Given the current landscape in the aerospace industry, we've encountered several obstacles, as you've probably seen on the news, the reduction in air travel. So in order to become and maintain our competitiveness and better serve our customers, we are looking at consolidating our manufacturing operations into one location, that location to be located at the property in question right now. So we're looking to create a 280,000-square-foot facility. 240,000 of that facility would be manufacturing with 40,000 office space. We look to meet with an opportunity to expand should future growth occur.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Yes.
The case you have before you is PUD 20-2, the Unison GE rezoning. As the applicant stated, they're looking to rezone about 53 and a three-quarter acres from, was currently zoned as an RP1, which is Research Park 1, to an I-1, or I'm sorry, an I, IPUD with I-1 and I-2 uses. The property is located in Research Park. It's just to the southwest of the intersection of I-675 and US-35. It also abuts Research Boulevard to the south. This is a closer view of that 53 and a three-quarter acre. It has good frontage on Research Park Drive, and then it does have visibility and frontage on 675 and 35. But of course, that's a limited access highway, so there'd be no direct access onto the freeway. Any access that they would have at this site would be directly off of Research Boulevard. Now, you can see, I've kind of highlighted the area is mostly wooded. It's about two-thirds of the, of the site is wooded. I highlighted in green. And then about a third of it is open field, which is in the center in the southeast corner. And then some of it's cleared right away on the, on the front edge of the road. Again, the property is zoned RP1 Research Park, which includes a lot of research and development uses, but not specifically any manufacturing uses. And as, as we go through, I can give a overview of what Unison does, but they, they do have some manufacturing components. And so what we are looking to do is rezone it to an IPUD with the uses all staying RP1 uses, but then adding general manufacturing as also an allowed use. To the west is A-1, which is the Walnut Grove Country Club. To the south is A-1 and I-1, where Greater Dayton Construction and a vacant field. And of course, to the northeast and the east is 675 right away. The property is classified as research and development, high-tech manufacturing and office on our land use plan, which is precisely what the applicant's requesting for this evening. So there is no compatibility concerns with the land use plan as it is today and as, you know, with what they're proposing. There is a vacant planning area, 51, that is on the site. However, that, that overlay, just all that did is a, there was a description of the property, not really, didn't add any constraints or regulations specifically to this property. Again, this is, the property is currently located within the Research Park and is owned by Miami Valley Research Park, which is a over 1,200 acre research and development park that was started back in the mid-eighties, mid-to-early eighties. They have properties in both Kettering and Beaver Creek, and they are looking for one, again, that's on the Beaver Creek side, just near, well, about the farthest northern site that they have in the, in the Research Park owned properties. As Unison stated on their website, you know, they manufacture engine parts. And then, so I just, I tried to get it to match up with the existing uses of the RP1. I just couldn't make that leap. So discussed it with the applicant and thought it'd be best to go through the I rezoning. And so what we did, again, was add general manufacturing to the existing uses that are allowed on site and is recommending that in the ordinance for your consideration. A few other things, we did propose a 100-foot buffer along the western property line. And this does a few things. This gives a good separation of use with the golf course that's out there now, but also our thoroughfare plan shows sometime in the future, it didn't give a timeline, a connection with Research Boulevard and up north at UES, yeah, UES and Dayton-Zenia Road and, and Linden. And keeping that 100-foot buffer does afford the opportunity, should that ever arise, there is a space, a physical space to put that public right away. But being that, being so far in the future or cost prohibitive, there was no plan, there was not, nothing in the zoning that states that they had to have to build a road with the application at this time, that that would be something the city would undertake, be that, be 30, 40 years from now. But we just, we at least wanted to keep that as a physical option someday in the future. Also, any architect, you would have to have four-sided features, just that whatever's on the front, you know, is carried around and not architecture on three sides and then a solid block wall on the back with no paint or no, no anything like that. But, and as far as the access points, again, didn't want to specify those in any kind of legislation, but they are, they'll be decided at the specific site plan stage. Just for clarification, we did get an application, actually, in taking the site plan to Planning Commission in February. I don't have it this evening because I've gotten it preliminary and really haven't gone through it, so I didn't want to bring anything. Spent more questions that I didn't have answers to, but, but they are moving forward. So the plan, the overall plan is for them to start construction, I believe, in April, or start clearing in April, May, and then be, start moving into the building this coming December timeframe and then be operational next March. It's a quick turnaround, but it's a good development of the site. It's a lot of 300 to 500 jobs, high-tech jobs going on to the site. It's a four-lane road that can handle the traffic that they're proposing. And Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval of the applicant's request.
All right, thank you.
And be here to answer questions.
Thank you. Now, this is a public hearing this evening. Is there anyone present that would like to address council on this application? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Council input, would we like to start over on my left with Councilmember Curran?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just very glad to see Unison being a part of our community by consolidating their efforts and wish them the very best in this new location. This is just one of many sites. We have land, Research Park land that's available, and I know the challenges we face putting the infrastructure in when we're faced with that. But we're certainly glad to have you and best wishes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have no questions. I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Curran. I think this is going to be an excellent addition to our community and welcome you. Thank you.
Councilmember Dorr.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, would like to thank the applicant for their ongoing commitment and investment in Beaver Creek. Also, want to thank them for maintaining a lot of the, the site. I like the 100-foot easement because often when I speak with residents, they say, can we keep the natural environment as best as possible? And I think that is going to do a lot. I like to look at the site plan, but I like that component. I think that staff and Planning Commission did a great job. I think a lot of my questions are answered. I would simply, I like to dot i's and cross t's. So whether or not there's been any recent input from Walnut Grove Country Club and/or Greater Dayton Construction, just in terms of any, any input, any issues from neighbors?
I haven't heard any specific questions. Greater Dayton asked about the sewer line that was being extended, but it wasn't specific to Unison itself.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Vales.
The 100-foot buffer is a buffer, not an easement? Is that correct?
It, it, it's being set up in the legislation as a buffer. So if they want to put landscaping, but it's already a fully wooded area, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I, I think we see a lot of I-1 uses along Research Boulevard currently, so.
Yeah, a lot of the area is zoned I-1 and?
To me, it makes sense. I look forward to seeing the specific site plans. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Adams.
I, too, want to thank Unison for considering Beaver Creek for their, their major, their big operation. I do have a couple of issues that we'll, I'll probably bring up with the site plan. Some of it has to do with, the, the road is designed four-lane, but it's really in bad shape. It needs some work. And I'm concerned about the heavier trucks and things like that, that will be utilized there, what that's going to do to it. So that's all.
All right. Very good. All right, the, yeah, the, the big part of this is obviously the, the site plan coming later. I just wanted, for the public comment, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear. This is not part of the original Research Park organ, I mean, it's owned by Research Park, but it's not under the auspices of the original Research Park. So that's why we have the capability to rezone this, something other than Research Park. So.
Sorry for, I didn't make that clarification. Yeah, correct.
Okay. With that, is there a motion? Oh, everybody else did. I can't be left out. Thank you for being there.
Mayor, I motion to move ordinance 21-02 to the second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve, or to move ordinance 21-02 onto the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. We'll see you in a couple weeks, sir.
Thank you.
Next, public hearing, PUD 96-4.
This is case number PUD 96-4, specific site plan number five, on an application filed by Great Lakes Property Development LLC, 4205 East Lake Road, Shellfield Lake, Ohio 44054. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of a 7,287 square foot adult daycare facility on 1.5 acres. The property is located at 80 Harbert Drive, further described as Book 3, Page 19, Parcel 99 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present this evening? Please come forward. Give us the name and address and the floor is all yours. You don't even have a three-minute restriction.
Good evening. My name's Nick Masara. My address is 4205 East Lake Road. And I'm here representing Great Lakes Property Development. We are the developer for the project. And then we have Joe Kowalski here. He is representing Empowered Community Services. They're the operator for the building. Just a little background, as far as the design review goes, we went through pre-development conferences on November 16th with the city, and we identified all their questions and comments after that. We've been in talk with the fire departments and the engineering for the city and the county, and we've also addressed all their comments thus far. We received Planning Commission approval on the 13th, I'm sure you're aware of. And pending your approval tonight, you know, we're ready to get this thing in preparation and get going as soon as possible. Be happy to answer any questions about the building or design for you guys. And then I'll let Joe give you a little about the operation.
We will certainly probably have a couple of questions, but if you have anybody else that wants to give input, please, please do that. We'll get through the public part here.
My name's Joe Kowalski. I'm at 131 Estelle Avenue in Eden, Ohio, 45323. I'm CEO of Empowered Community Services, and we will be the operator at this location. We're a community-based service provider for adults with developmental and intellectual disabilities. We provide several, again, community-based services at our location and throughout the community. We are, oh, just a little over two years old now. Our first location was in Inglewood, a northern suburb of Dayton. We've got a second location in Springbrough. We're nearing completion on a third location in Butler County, and then we kind of came back up here to the Dayton area. And I'm partial to Beaver Creek myself. We do a lot of business here. My kids play soccer here and, and other things. And so we thought it was a great, great spot to, to land and looking forward to providing services here and serving not only Beaver Creek, but Green County community as a whole.
Sure.
And as well as neighboring Kettering and Riverside and those other areas. So I'm happy to answer any questions around operations or the agency that you might have.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we'll have the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before he's an application requesting specific site plan approval for an approximately 7,200 square foot, single-story building that would provide adult day programs, services at 80 Harbert Drive. The 1.5 acre property under discussion is the last vacant site within PUD 96-4 and has approximately 450 feet of frontage along Harbert Drive. The lot's located at the dead end of Harbert, and although there are no plans at this time to extend Harbert as part of this application, if in the future the property to the east were to develop, then we would have those discussions at that point on continuing Harbert Drive. So the proposed building is a one-story, 7,287 square foot building, and is designed to be architecturally similar in appearance to a traditional schoolhouse. In the plans, the, the structure is shown to consist of primarily white engineered wood siding, like a hardy plank. And it'll be used both vertically and horizontally on the building. And then they're also proposing to use a brown brick around the entirety of the building. And, and then also, as you can see, they'll have high roof lines and shuttered windows. The building is approximately 94 feet deep and 152 feet wide, and it will be approximately 19 feet tall, the halfway point between the eve and the peak. At the highest point on this building specifically, the, the height is 28 and a half feet tall. So as far as parking goes, the applicant is required to have one space for each five persons under their supervised care, plus one space for each employee, plus a space for each of the vehicles that they'll be using, which brings their total required parking to 21 parking spaces. And that's exactly how many parking spaces that they're providing. Two of those parking spaces will be handicap accessible, and then three of those parking spaces will be used for their, for the vans that they use to transport the attendees to the site. So the applicant is proposing one-way circulation on the site. You would come in on the, on the west side and exit on the east. Staff doesn't see an issue with this because there isn't going to be a lot of traffic on the site. The attendees will actually be picked up and dropped off. So there won't be like 8:00 AM traffic or, or 5:00 PM traffic on the site. So there shouldn't be any issues with, with circulation or parking. Applicant's also proposing to construct a sidewalk along the entirety of Harbert Drive that will connect to the sidewalk just to the south. This is the last piece of the sidewalk network within that Harbert Drive development. As far as stormwater goes, let's see if I can get back to the air photo. There is a, there's an existing stormwater detention pond on the site. It's located back behind these buildings. That, that pond was constructed to accommodate all of the water for the entire PUD as it was built out. So they won't be required to build their own stormwater pond. However, they do need to meet current water quality standards. So we'll make sure that, that they do meet those EPA standards before we release any zoning permits. As far as landscaping goes, the applicant stated that we worked with them on the landscaping. We wanted to make sure that they did provide some additional screening. Let me just get to the landscape plan here. Some additional screening along the, the parking lot here to block lighting across the street. So they did provide that. As you can see by the plan, they're providing quite a, a nice variation of landscaping throughout the site, and we will approve the final landscape plan before we release zoning permits. As far as signage goes, we just added a condition to make sure that they remain consistent with the signage that's used throughout the rest of the Harbert Drive development. So 25 square feet per side, six feet high, with materials that are consistent with, with what's being used on the building. Based on that, staff is recommending approval as well as Planning Commission with the 13 conditions in the attached motion. And if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
All right. Thank you. Now, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this application? Seeing none, we will close the public input section and go to council input. Open this up. Any questions? Have you got thoughts or concerns? Please go. Mr. Councilman Dorr.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the applicant for their interest in, in Beaver Creek. Thank you. I think the site matches the other businesses in the neighborhood very well. I think it flows very nicely. I have two questions. The first is related to stormwater. The topography of that area is somewhat uneven, and so it would need to be flattened in order to build the building. But was the storm retention site built farther back anticipating a runoff there? And if we lose that elevation, will there be issues on that site?
I'm not an engineer, but the, the grading plans will have to be approved by our engineering department, by our- department, by our city engineer, so I'm sure that that, that is...
Sure.
Yeah.
Very good, so I don't, I don't have any doubts, but it just struck me in...
I'm positive that he's going to ensure that, that the water continues to run towards the detention pond.
Sure. And with the height of the building at 28 and a half feet, and again, I don't know what that's going to look like depending on, again, the topography, has there been any input from the neighborhood to the north that could potentially have issues or see?
We, we have not received any input at all before planning commission or now on this case.
I mean, there are other higher buildings and cell tower area.
In a residential district, you're, for residential districts, your building, your house is allowed to be two and a half feet, two and a half stories, which is roughly 36 and a half feet, so...
And in terms of shrubbery, staff feels that's appropriate to block light. I mean, there are periodic complaints on that type of...
Yes, yes. We worked with the applicant to add some additional, additional shrubbery to make sure, and make sure it's tall enough to hit those, the lights on cars, so...
I don't know enough about the shrubbery, but just the evergreen year round.
The dense, the dense, yes.
The dense.
Yeah, making sure that they stay green, yes.
Thank you. I think it's a wonderful idea, and thank you for the staff and those that have been working on this. Thanks.
All right. I think the applicant might have had something they wanted to add. Did you want to add anything to this question? You're part of the team.
Yeah. My name's Mike Cloud. I'm the president of Great Lakes Property Development. I'm the engineer of record, so Nick's done a fine job introducing this, but to address your specific stormwater concerns, we are required to do stormwater quality, not quantity. The pond handles quantity. We are going to be doing underground ADS system underneath the parking lot to address quality, and we've graded the site such that we're going to capture the required design flows for quality and quantity and route them through that system. With respect to building height, the permissible building height in the PUD is 35 feet, so we are under that. And with respect to landscaping, this being really a nine-to-five facility, we have, you know, pretty much de minimis lighting, just enough to meet the standard for getting in and out in the winter months. It's not something that's lit up like a 7-Eleven all night long or anything like that. And then on top of that, we've got pretty robust landscaping, so everything you asked are great concerns, and are things that we've contemplated and incorporated in the design.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales.
I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
All right.
Microphone.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Nothing for me, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilmember Curran?
Nothing for me, Your Honor.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for providing this type of a business back there, especially for some of us that may need it soon.
Yeah, there you go.
But I looked at the drawings, and I think it's going to be a nice-looking building. I liked what it's going to add to the area, and I think mostly the questions that I had have already been answered, so I'm, I'm happy with it. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have much to add. I, it's going to be nice to fill in that space on Harbert, and that the landscape to the south, of course, is next to Stornlock, correct? So it, not quite as critical as that, it may face Harbert, but anything to make it look pretty, we like it that way, so we appreciate it. Do I have a motion? Somebody needs to read the motion, please.
Mayor, I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of a specific site plan for the empowered community services of Beaver Creek. On that basis, that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per section 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which are 13. I further move that this motion, with all conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of this city council meeting.
Do I hear a second? I have a second. So I have a motion and a second to approve specific site plan number five for PUD 96-4.
So move, Your Honor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Next, resolutions, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 20-35.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 20-35. It's an ordinance repealing section 9604, removal of ice and snow of chapter 96 Streets and Sidewalks of the Beaver Creek Codified Ordinances.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on council for this? This was sponsored by Councilmember Curran. Do you have a motion?
Section 9604, the codified ordinance, move to approve ordinance 20-35, Your Honor.
A second? I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-35. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is resolution 21-01.
This is resolution 2101, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee, the Financial Administrative Services Director, to request advanced draws upon the amounts collected by Green County Auditor for the City of Beaver Creek 2020 real estate and personal property taxes collected during calendar year 2021.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. This is our annual resolution that we do. The county auditor collects property taxes throughout the year. By the ORC, they're required to distribute that in March and in August. By passing this resolution, which is allowed in the ORC, it allows them to distribute the money a little faster as soon as they get it. We usually start receiving it February, and then again, in the beginning of July, rather than waiting until March and August. So in order to get those advanced draws, we have to pass this resolution and send it over to the county auditor to authorize him to release those advances.
Questions? Motion, please.
Move to approve resolution 21-01.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 21-01. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, resolution 21-02.
This is resolution 2102. It's a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council determining the necessity of levying a renewal tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation for constructing, reconstructing, reservicing, and repairing streets, roads, and bridges as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, which is a renewal levy to run for a continuing period of time pursuant to Ohio Revised Code section 5705.19 and subsection 5705.19G as amended, and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewithin.
Thank you. Sir.
That's very good, Melissa. Thank you.
She's going right to town.
Pretty much sums it all up. If you have any questions, the current 3.4-mill street levy is set to expire at the end of 2021. Council, at some previous meetings and work sessions, have decided to bring that forward as a renewal of the existing 3.4-mill street levy and make it for a continuous period, again, to follow along with our financial strategy of stabilizing the funding mechanism for maintaining operations and providing capital for the street program. The current levy represents $4.64 million and is about 76% of that street levy fund, so again, it is a critical component of the entire street program, in particular, the operations of that program itself. In order to place the levy on the May 4th ballot, you're required to take a couple of steps, and the first step is to adopt this resolution, which basically is requesting the county auditor to certify the revenue that would be generated from that 3.4-mill renewal levy, and that's required by the ORC, and we send that over to him. He has 10 days to certify that revenue and get it back to us. And then the second phase would be upon two-thirds vote of the council, they would need to adopt a resolution to put it on the ballot for the May 4th, but we need to do that in January 25th meeting in order to meet the board of elections deadline for February 3rd. Again, this is all the prelude to getting it on the May 4th ballot, so this is step one.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion?
I'd just like to make a statement, and I'll probably read the same statement during the ordinance in a couple of weeks too, but I think it's clear our residents sent us a message this past November by failing to pass our income tax initiative, which would fund our necessary road improvement projects. And while I'm disappointed in the outcome, it is critical that we continue to collect revenues that provide the revenue we need to make such critical infrastructure improvements. Therefore, you know, I think it's, it's important that we continue to collect the property taxes that are needed, and it's vital to our roadways to pass the 3.4-mill levy. So I am a proponent of making this a continual levy because we do rely so heavily on grant funding, and that grant funding is often projected five, six, seven years in the future, and it's important for us to understand what kind of revenues we're going to have to match those funds. So with that, I would say I would support this resolution. Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? Would you like to make a motion, sir, while you're...
Yes, sir. Motion to approve resolution 21-02.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolutions 21-02. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, resolution 21-03.
This is resolution 21-03, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign and execute the Business First for a Greater Dayton Region Business Retention and Expansion Program Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement 2021 through 2025.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Mayor. As the assistant clerk had stated, this is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into contract with Business First. Now, this is a program that we've been involved with since 2016. It was a four-year contract to begin with that was up in 20, so they're looking to extend that contract. Business First is an intercooperational agreement between many jurisdictions in Montgomery County and Green County. It's a, it's a good program for educational purposes for not only staff, but businesses in the city and businesses outside the city. It's basically a joint database that, educational resource that we can use to learn about businesses in our city, some of the needs they have. It affords us the opportunity to do site visits on, to businesses and ask a series of questions on what their needs are, what the anticipated needs of the future are. Unfortunately, haven't been able to go out and do those business visits this last year. Nobody wants us out there in their businesses, so, and that's understandable, but I anticipate doing more businesses once, or more visits once, you know, the world opens back up to interaction between people. I think one of the, the biggest features of this, and it goes unstated, but what it is, it's an insurance policy for the city, because this agreement states that other cities won't actively try to recruit businesses that are in Beaver Creek to come to them, but it also states that we won't actively go and try to recruit businesses that are in other cities. And it also, if a business does, if a Beaver Creek business were approached in other cities, such as Fairborn, Centerville, Kettering, that municipality is obligated to let us know, you know, that the XYZ company's looking to move here, and it gives us a chance to go out and meet with XYZ and see if they've got concerns that we can meet and keep them here in Beaver Creek. So I think it's, it's a good insurance policy. It's got a annual fee that we've got, it's been budgeted, it's already in our budget, and we're good to go. We're just talking with the law director. We just need to get city, council approval before the city manager signs off on that contract. It goes from 21 through 25. It's a four-year contract again.
All right. Thank you.
Very good program. Excellent.
Other comments? Motion?
Motion. Motion to approve resolution 21-03.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 21-03. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is resolution 21-04.
This is resolution number 21-04. It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an LPA federal project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the project known as the Indian Ripple Road Sidewalks Project, Pid number 103493.
Thank you. Sir.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Back in 2016, the city received grant funding for a project along Indian Ripple Road between Harbert and Grange Hall. The project is, essentially involves the construction of curbing, pedestrian facilities on both sides of the street, and some other miscellaneous drainage improvements. Since we received that money, we've completed the acquisition of all right-of-way deed for the project. We've completed the design work, and we're now ready to proceed to construction where this project is included in the 2021 capital budget for the city. However, before proceeding, it's necessary to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the project, which basically governs the administration of the money and how everything is going to work between us and ODOT. Therefore, I'd ask the city council approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into that agreement.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
Motion to approve resolution 21-04.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 21-04. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, council time.
Wow.
How about we mix it up just a little bit? Councilmember Schwartz, would you like to start?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to say congratulations to Chief Fiorita on his swearing-in this morning. I was unable to make it, but we welcome, and I know that you will do an excellent job, so congratulations. The second thing I just wanted to say and kind of wanted to reiterate what our presenter from Soya had to say, you know, this COVID thing isn't going away, so I just continue and urge our residents to take the necessary precautions, wear masks, and stay as healthy as possible, because the hospitals are struggling, so please keep that in mind. And that, with that, I presume that there's some event that everyone wants to get to, so I'll keep it short. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Curran?
I would echo Councilmember Schwartz's comments concerning the chief. All the best to you, chief. I know you'll continue and do, just do a super, absolutely super job. Also, we want to alert our citizens again to the COVID and the need to follow the CDC guidelines, we're not out of the woods yet, and we need to follow the directions that will be given in the next several weeks concerning the vaccine, and hopefully this will be something that'll be behind us here in the months to come. That's all I have, Your Honor.
All right. Councilmember Bales?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. It's good to be back, and hopefully 2021 will be a positive and a different year than 2020. I too want to congratulate Chief Fiorita. It's a great accomplishment. I appreciate your long service to the community, and I know you're going to be a fantastic chief. Also, wanted to say that I appreciate the creativity of our Parks and Recreation Department. I get an email blast from them from, from time to time, and a couple days ago, I got the snowflake scavenger hunt. I think that that's really cool, given, you know, the pandemic has forced us to get creative in different ways, and so anyway, to get those routine sign-ups or routine notifications, you can sign up for those on our website, I believe, or by calling the city. I also wanted to say that even though it was a little chilly yesterday, I played my first round of golf of the year, and, but the golf course staff was very cordial, they were excited to see us. There were about 30 or 40 people out playing yesterday, which was pretty amazing, and so anyway, it was chilly, but, but good. Finally, on a little more serious note, Mayor, your words at the beginning of the meeting were very well said. I think we all need to pray for our country. We all need to pray for a peaceful transition of power. And, and finally, I'll put my mask back on and conclude by saying, go Bucks.
Oh, H. Councilmember Doer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to say Happy New Year to everyone. Hopefully, it was a good Christmas and holiday season. Like to congratulate Chief Fiorita. You're such a wonderful asset to our community, and I'm so thankful for you as the chief, so thank you. Like to thank Parks and Recreation. I know it's been some time since our last meeting, excuse me, but the Wharton Park lights were fantastic. I went solo with our three kids. I went solo with our three kids to that event, and that was really wonderful, so I'd like to thank all the staff there. And just to echo the sentiments to stay safe, and especially in the flu and COVID season. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and pray that 2021 is a better year for everybody. But I have to say, there were several good things that came out of 2020, including the birth of my great-granddaughter. I have to look at that as a real plus. But for the most part, the year was one that none of us expected when it started. And I pray that we can get back to some sort of normalcy as this year goes on. And along those lines, I've been volunteering with the Green County Health Department at the clinics, giving the vaccine. And to this point, they're still doing Phase 1A, but they've given over 1,200 vaccines so far. Phase 1B should be starting soon. If anyone is interested in getting involved in that, getting their name on the list for that, you can go to the website of the county health department, which is www.gcpH.info, and follow the link to sign up. And we've also posted on the city's Facebook page and the city's website. So for those of you that fall into 1B, which is 65 and older, and those with chronic illnesses, please get signed up, and they will be in touch with you to let you know when you can get your shot. And just remember, it's a two-shot deal. There's 28 days between each shot. I attended a virtual meeting with the Beaver Creek Youth Council yesterday. Every time I go to one of these meetings, either in person or virtually, I'm just really impressed with our kids that are here in Beaver Creek that do an outstanding job. They're in the process of putting together some things for this next year with COVID in mind and being able to serve our community and still protect themselves. One other quick thing for those interested, I also work with the Wright Bee Flyer, and the mall out here at Fairfield Commons is having a dedication to flight over the next several months with several different displays out there. We've actually placed a full-scale model of the Wright Bee Flyer out there, so if you're interested, please go out and visit with that. It's just inside the front entrance there by Basil's. It's behind glass. I didn't want anybody touching it because I don't want to... That's an expensive airplane. I didn't want anybody to destroy it. And last, but certainly not least, I also want to congratulate Chief Fiorita on moving up. I've watched him go from basically a patrolman all the way to a chief, and it's really fun to watch, so congratulations. I know you do a great job. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. As already been said, I mean, 2020 was a different year. Some of us are old enough to remember the movie Good, Bad, and the Ugly. Well, that sort of depicts a little bit of this past year, but the important part is to remember that there was good in this year. Councilmember Bales brought it up, how our Parks Department reacted. It's that way across the board. We've learned a lot. There's a lot of good to come out of it. Businesses will do business a little bit different in the future as well. So let's not forget what was good about 2020, but we still want to hope for better in Chief, I'd like to give you some of my time, if you'd like to come up and say hello. It was my pleasure to be able to swear you in this morning, and not just a pleasure, but my honor, so please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As I mentioned, I believe it was back on November the 9th, I believe it was, when we had said goodbye to Chief Evers. And as I said back then, he has been a mentor of mine in my entire 29-year career here. He was pretty much the first person I spent time with in the polygraph room, and Don reminded me of his time in the polygraph room with me. So it's been a long time ago. However, as I mentioned also this morning, it's truly an honor and a privilege to fill in this capacity and work with the men and women we have over at the police department, and it's an honor to serve this community, which I've been doing, going on 30 years now. So I do appreciate that, and I thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We'll move on then to the city manager's report.
I thank you, Mayor. As everyone has said, congrats to Chief Fiorita. There's a few pictures from this morning, the swearing-in, and chief's family that came and friends. His wife pinned him. I think she drew a little blood there, chief, from what he was... The look on his face, I think she drew blood. So congratulations, and we look forward to many years of service. This was mentioned, but there is one of the creativities of the parks is a... Snowflakes are hidden at 10 of our Beaver Creek parks. Each snowflake will have a scrambled word or phrase. You keep track of the snowflakes and you find, and the codes, and you'll find 10, 10, all 10, and you decode the secret message. Then you are to email it there to parks@beavercreechohio.gov by January 29 to be entered into a drawing for $50 in park bucks, and the park bucks goes towards those things that the parks charges fees for various events and programming. So you'll have 50 bucks in park bucks. Additional information, and to see hint one, you can please visit the beavercreechohio.gov, Parks Department, or the city's Facebook page, of course. So that's a fun activity during this time to get you out and about. Just as a reminder, City Hall will be closed this coming Monday, January 18, and observe observance of the holiday Martin Luther King Junior Day. And of course, as always, for emergencies, call 911, but non-emergencies, you can call 937-426-1225, which is the Beaver Creek Dispatch Department. I did want to mention the Wordinger Park. The winner was, and I do rub it into some here, as Pete and I are Optimist Club members, the Optimist Club did win the Wordinger Park Light, so congratulations to the Optimist Club. And the last thing, just to piggyback on the COVID-19, on our website here, beavercreechohio.gov, we do have a news article on the COVID-19 that gives you the information and links you to the county public health, and where we did one today for somebody. You can go in, and you can put your name on the list, and then they'll contact you when your age group or your category is available to schedule you for the shot. So check that out if you have any information on that. And that's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you. And I'll just follow up by saying that's very... The website is very easy to use. It's a very simple process, so get signed up if you're in that category. At this point, we'll open this up to citizen comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address counsel on any issue at all? Seeing none, we will move on, and do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.